Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call this meeting of the Clackamas County Commissioners to order. And I ask Laurel Butman, our Deputy County Administrator, to call the roll, please.
Yes, I will do so. I wanted to announce that Chair Bernard is attending meetings in Washington, DC, and he won't be in attendance tonight. So Commissioner Humberston is serving as Chair for tonight's meeting. So I want to recognize Sean Lilligrin from County Council, who's sitting over here, and to my left, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. So the role. Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Chavez?
Here.
And Chair Humberston?
Here.
And on that note, would you all rise and follow me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation. Laurel, would you go ahead and do the full introduction?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to announce the presentation of the Drive to Zero winners of the posters and coasters Safe Driving Media Contest. We have Joe Merrick and Patty McMillan here from our Department of Transportation and Development to present to us today. Along with several young people, I see.
Can you bring up the slides?
Yeah, can you talk?
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Merrick. I'm the Transportation Safety Program Manager for the county, and I oversee our Drive to Zero program. The Drive to Zero program is an important component of our Transportation Safety Action Plan. The goal of that plan is to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes to zero by 2035, a very ambitious goal. Tonight, we're here to talk about one of the important components of that plan, which is our young drivers, making sure those people are able to traverse the road and get safely to their destination, home to their families. And one of the elements is our high school posters and coasters program, which we're very excited to have that program and run through a presentation and our poster awards this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. I'm Patty McMillan, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize some wonderfully talented students. With me tonight are Kara Attia from Sandy High School, Caroline Yakel from Lake Oswego, and Anna Purcell from Sandy High School. We have another student in the audience, Rowan Chen from Lake Oswego, as well as Russell Williams. He is a State Farm representative. State Farm Insurance has helped fund this project, and we're thankful to them. And of course, all the parents and other cheerleaders, thank you for coming tonight. The posters and coasters Safe Driving Media Contest is open to all high school students within Clackamas County. We run it every other year since 2008. Students are invited to create artwork focused on transportation risks such as speed, distracted driving, and impaired driving, or prevention strategies like seatbelt use or parental support. Positive uplifting messages are encouraged as they reflect the need for us to drive with courtesy and respect. A total of 96 entries were received from six schools. The posters were rated on creativity, message impact, and promotional appeal. They will be outreach into the community and right away in upcoming graduation edition in the Pamplin newspaper. In the fall, the top posters will be featured at Clackamas Town Center, and the top award poster will actually be a billboard as well. Personally, I really enjoy this project because it puts our students front and center. Youth have a very straightforward and honest way of looking at things, and maybe people will be more inclined to change their behavior if someone from their own community is asking them to do so. So now to the awards. First place, Kara Attia, Sandy High School, with her poster, "Don't Let It Take Over." This poster depicts a driver with a head as a cellphone. Pretty dramatic. Some people may be addicted to their cellphones even while driving, and this poster reminds us that our only responsibility while driving is driving. Second place is Caroline Yakel from Lake Oswego High School with her poster, "Their Lives." This features children and a car rearview mirror. This poster reinforces the importance of driving safely, especially by those who depend on us. Carolyn's design is very crisp and also almost a bit funny. If you look on the side, there's a kid with a smirk on his face. Third place winner is Anna Purcell, also Sandy High School, with "What You Can't See." This poster focuses on drivers looking out before backing out. This is a message we have not seen before, and Anna's artwork was exceptional. We also have some honorable mentions to go through. This is Ari Vest and Beth Dolan. They're both from Lake Oswego High School. Ari's poster stood out with the design and use of color. Beth's poster of a cellphone as a time bomb, well, that says a lot. Next is Liam Kangell and Zachary Olson, Lake Oswego. Liam's poster, "Normal Speed Meets Every Need," is a great tagline. And Zach's poster, "Don't Play," brings the Grim Reaper and a game of life together. Both posters are unique, and once again, the artwork was outstanding. Next, we have Maddie Mansky and Gretchen Story, Lake Oswego. Maddie's visual is a group of graduates with one missing due to texting. This is the poster that will be featured in the graduation edition of the newspapers. Gretchen Story's poster reminds drivers not to end up as a tragic storyline. Both very effective messages. Now, the next are Caroline Scharf from Rex Putnam High School and Emma Line Lawrence from Clackamas High School. Carolyn's poster has a cellphone as a passenger, reminding drivers to just put it away. And Emma Line has a crash test dummy using a phone, saying, "Don't be a dummy." Kind of an interesting twist. The last poster is a bit cutting edge. It shows a skeleton putting on lipstick in the shape of a car. It reminds us that there are a lot of distractions, not just cellphones, and crashes aren't pretty. So what's next? As I mentioned, the posters will be outreach into the community. If there are businesses or other community members who would like to feature the posters, they can contact us. We're anxious to hear from you. We can be contacted at drivetozero@clackamas.us. That's drivetozero@clackamas.us, or my phone is 503-742-4661. I'd like to thank the Board and their continued support of the Drive to Zero program. We are trying to make a difference. Also to State Farm Insurance, who helps fund the program, and of course, to the students who make this all happen. Are there any questions before we award?
Anybody?
Other than, but just a comment, very impressive.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Really beautiful.
Very clever, very thoughtful.
Every year, it just gets better and better.
And artistic.
Very.
I can't do stick figures with a compass and ruler, so I'm impressed.
So what we'd like to do is have our students, and Rowan, please join us, and any other students who came maybe after we began, please join us in front for a picture with the Board, and we'll give them their awards and some checks.
Do they want to say anything while they're sitting there?
Well, I had a question. Maybe, if maybe, just really quick, Kara, especially if you could tell us what was your inspiration for your poster?
I honestly was just trying to think of, like, something, like, I know cellphones may, I don't know, I feel like sometimes they can be overdone with this topic, but I was trying to find a way to, like, still do something with that and make it not as, like, something people would think about, like, try and make, just like, I don't know, just trying to switch it up a little bit. I was just, I thought it'd be a really cool idea, so.
And Caroline?
Well, I guess, I felt like all of the posters that I saw were, like, aimed, marketed towards teenagers, and I felt that it was also important to go towards possibly parents or other people who have children, drive in the car with them, as, yeah.
They need the message, too.
Yep, I guess.
Anna?
So I took Driver's Ed, and they showed us a picture when we were taking it of all these kids, like, lined up behind a car, and the driver couldn't see any of them. There was, like, I think, like, 12 of them, and so it really showed me how much you can't see when you're driving, and so I kind of wanted to show people that, and it couldn't just be a kid, maybe it's, like, you know, another car in your blind spot, like, you've got to be aware when you're driving, and I kind of just wanted to express that.
Lot of blind spots.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to thank Dan Shanklin from Sandy High School and Katie Brink from Lake Oswego High School, and that's why you heard Lake Oswego and Sandy so often, is because these teachers actually bring contests to their classrooms, and that makes a difference in participation, so I would like to thank them in their absence. So thanks, everybody, for coming out. We have parents, we have State Farm, we have a lot of people supporting us, so without further ado, it's time. Go right up front here. We'll probably get the taller people in the back of you. Yeah, you have to, there we go, there we go. So we're going to do one, and I'm going to go grab the big chest and do one more, if that's okay. Thank you. And before anybody moves. I didn't want to do this first because sometimes it can block the view, but we have to do it. Caroline, here is your check. Take it to the bank. Kara? We might have to have you spread out just a teeny bit. And we'll get a couple pictures. Just on the back. Maybe another round of applause.
Thank you guys so much.
And what we'll do is we'll meet you all in the hall and take some more pictures. Thank you very much.
Good job, you guys.
Next up, we have Citizen Communications, and we have two this evening, John Lee and it looks like Bob Reynolds, if you'd come up, please. So if you'd identify yourself and where you live?
My name is John Lee. I live in Boring, Oregon, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a candidate for House District 39, the state representative, to replace the retiring Bill Kennermer. House District 39 includes Camby, Estacada, parts of OC, Beaver Creek, Eagle Creek, Malino, Boring, parts of Damascus, and a huge chunk of unincorporated Clackamas County. First, I'd like to thank you for the rare evening session. Now that your efforts with NCPRD are winding down, I would like to encourage you to reinstitute evening meetings monthly, not just quarterly. I realize that it's difficult to get citizen involvement, except I found that at the door, they seem to give you all you want. When there's a highly contested issue, this room's often full, but as civic leaders, it should be our every effort to get as much citizen involvement as we can, and we all know that evening meetings allow more opportunity than day meetings. Lastly, I've been knocking on a lot of doors all over my district, and I've been to more community meetings than I care to even think of anymore. The one major issue that comes up over and over and over at every door, at every meeting, every leadership group, and that's congestion, traffic. The toll comes up a lot, and I know you all are dealing with that, you know, every day, but the toll will just make that congestion and that traffic worse on our rural roads. And so I just want to encourage you, as my leaders in Clackamas County, to work with ODOT, work with the cities, and again, you know, work on our particularly unincorporated roads to help alleviate some of the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
My name is Rob Reynolds. I'm a congressional candidate for the US Fifth District, and I've been going around all over Clackamas County, all over the district, talking to people, but a lot in Clackamas County, I'm running into people going, "What are they going to do about my guns? Is the county going to try and take them away? What are they going to do? This is IP-43, it's scary." You know, why do they want to take my guns away? So what I want to ask tonight is that Clackamas County takes the steps to make us a Second Amendment sanctuary, so that we don't lose our Second Amendment rights, no matter what the city of Portland does or the state does. And the city of Dallas did this last week, and so I think that, you know, I can provide you the paperwork for what they did for their ordinance, if you guys would like, but I would love to see Clackamas County step up and be the first county in Oregon to become a Second Amendment sanctuary county where we can make sure and keep our guns. We don't have the gun issues that they have in other states, and most of our gun owners here are hunters. We have a great program with the Oregon Hunters Association where we teach kids how to hunt correctly and how to use their weapons correctly. So, you know, is there any way I can get from you tonight that you guys will actually take this up and look at making us a sanctuary county where we're not going to lose our Second Amendment rights because of what's going on in the state?
Well, I know there were some discussions on something similar to that back a few years ago. I'm not sure what the outcome of that was, other than not really getting very much done, frankly. I don't know of any actions by anybody on this commission that are interested in taking anybody's guns away from.
Well, I understand that, but I want to make sure that we get something, an ordinance written, so that if IP-43 actually happens, that we here in Clackamas County are safe from it. Because Portland's population is larger than, Malinois County's population is larger than Clackamas, so we don't want them, their decision ruling over us, and that's the concern. If you listen to any political candidate or, you know, people guiding them, they're always, they're always like, "Oh, well, it's won by Malinois County and Lane County." So our, my concern and the people in Clackamas County's concern is that we're going to get this new ordinance passed down on us, and we're not going to be a way to stop it, and that's why I'm asking Clackamas County to step up tonight to give us this ordinance that would protect us from IP-43 or anything like that. Because the Second Amendment is our constitutional right, you know, and, but then again, we have to fight, we have to fight to save it. I'd rather see us step up and be the first ones to say, "No, we're going to be like the city of Dallas and write an ordinance that will save us." So is there any way I can get you guys to look at that, if I provide you with the paperwork what they offered, or, you know, how do I get this going in our county?
Well, if you want to give us some paperwork, we'll certainly look at that. Paul, did you have something?
Yeah, you want to send us something, that's fine, but I will say that I want to make sure that people are watching this, they understand that we don't make gun laws at counties. That's a state law issue. So we are a general law county, and we have to abide by state law.
Right, but if you didn't ordinance?
We don't trump state law.
So Dallas City ordinance doesn't matter, then?
I don't know. I'll look into that. This is new to me, so I'm happy to look into that. So send me what you got, and then we'll take a look at it. I'm sure that the law of Texas is not quite the law of Oregon.
No, Dallas, Oregon.
Or Dallas, Oregon, okay.
Dallas, Oregon, the city of Dallas, yeah, no.
Jump to the, yeah.
No, no, Dallas, Oregon. It's in my district, and that's, you know, so I know, I know it's, I know what's going on, and that's why I want to see, you know, Clackamas County is the largest county in Fifth District. So it would be awesome if they would step up and take a lead on this.
What county is that in?
Polk.
Polk County.
Anything else, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item that we have is a public hearing, and the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Service District Number One for the next item. Staff has a presentation of the first reading of an ordinance.
So Chris Story is here today for Water and Environment Services to introduce this amendment to the West partnership for Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Story with Water and Environment Services. I am here this evening to assist in the public hearing and discussion around an amendment to the West's IGA, and the reason why this is a public hearing is because of the specificity required in the statute that says you can adopt an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement, to form a partnership, but if ever you do, you also have to adopt that same agreement by ordinance. So it has the power of ordinance. So we actually have, it's basically a contract between the three service districts, but we actually have to adopt that contract by ordinance. It's a little unusual, so I wanted to flag that. So we are having three public hearings this evening. You are currently sitting as the governing body of Clackamas County Service District Number One. You will subsequently see public hearings for the other two service districts that compromise the West's partnership, and the objective of these amendments is to revise the foundational document that formed West. When West was formed, first, just between CCSD-1 and Tri-City in November of 2016, it contemplated a contribution or transfer of assets from those districts into the West partnership so that the regionalization of the services could operate more efficiently. The objective was to try and have that accomplished by June 30, 2018, and that deadline is coming right up. One of the major issues to be addressed in that transition, which the Board identified 18 months ago, was the outstanding debt that CCSD-1 held. One of the key commitments from the Board as the governing body was that only ratepayers from CCSD-1 would be obliged to pay for the debt that CCSD-1 had at the time of the transfer. And there was an open question, we need to do some research, how about whether that needed to stay within CCSD-1 or if it could be transferred to West? We do have an effective and, I think, reasonable approach that will allow the debt to be transferred to West, but still ensure that only the ratepayers of CCSD-1 are responsible for that debt. The amendment you have here this evening addresses that transfer, and the mechanism that the Board is being suggested to implement to ensure that only those CCSD-1 ratepayers are responsible for the debt that was outstanding before the formation of West. One of the key advantages of the transfer, and there are two, the first is there are bond restrictions, and the restrictions around the bond said you can't get rid of your assets so long as you have the debt. It's basically a kind of securitization, which meant that CCSD-1 had to hold on to all of its assets and couldn't contribute them to West for so long as the debt was outstanding unless it was transferred. One of the key benefits that we were looking at from a regionalization standpoint was the single ownership of the regulatory assets of the different service districts. Having one entity hold all the Clean Water Act permits would allow us to pursue more effective regulatory strategies that could avoid tens of millions of dollars of duplicative investment. So we've been looking for ways to make sure that that happened, and this is one of the key steps in making that happen. The second is neither Tri-City Service District nor Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, in having any outstanding debt, did not also have any credit rating or access to credit markets. They were unknown. By transferring the debt over to West and having everyone participate together, we're able to bootstrap those two areas of West into a better credit rating. Currently, CCSD-1 has a double A-plus credit rating, which is the second-best credit rating, and I want to caveat this, this is entirely unofficial, but as part of our due diligence process that will be presented to the Board at a subsequent public hearing on the 24th, we have received preliminary indications from Standard and Poor's that they are going to upgrade West to triple A debt because it is the combined regional approach to service delivery. We are thrilled with that preliminary result, so it's unofficial, keep it under your hats.
Yeah, this is a public meeting.
But that's a public secret.
Just between us, just between us. But we're very excited that when that becomes official, we will be writing that into proposed findings that you'll be seeing on May 24th. So that is the reason why we're having these hearings this evening. The staff materials may look duplicative, but that's because the same amendment is being adopted by three different districts, and this is just the hearing for CCSD-1, and I promise my presentation for the next two will be substantially shorter. Do you have any questions for me?
Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenters? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. In our vast viewing audience, does anybody wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only. I move to read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved. Would the clerk please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only?
Okay, the first one is going to be ordinance number 04-2018 of Clackamas County Service District Number One, an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the intergovernmental partnership agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and Tri-City Service District regarding the Water Environment Services partnership.
Thank you. Any, is there any further discussion? Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Hearing none, the second reading will be Thursday, May 26, 2018, at a regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM. We will now adjourn as Service District Number One and convene as the Tri-City Service District for the next item.
Again, Chris Story presenting, very similarly to the last one.
Blah, 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 ditto. This is, the only difference that I will highlight from the Tri-City perspective is while CCSD-1 was gaining the benefit of being able to contribute their assets, Tri-City has gained the benefit of having the consolidation of their assets, which have already been contributed into West with CCSD-1, so that they can achieve those same regulatory efficiencies, and the assurances, and there is additional language in this proposed amendment, that ratepayers within the Tri-City Service District will not be paying for the CCSD-1 debt. Thank you, my presentation.
Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenters at this time? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing that no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only. I move to read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. Would the clerk please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only?
You bet. This is going to be ordinance number 05-2018 of Tri-City Service District, an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the intergovernmental partnership agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and Tri-City Service District regarding the Water Environment Services partnership.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, the second reading will be at the Thursday, May 26, 2018, regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM. We will now adjourn as the Tri-City Service District and convene as the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for the next item.
And again, Chris Story presenting a similar story about the Surface Water Management Service District of Clackamas County.
Keeping it, keeping everyone awake. We're in the evening.
Keeping it, keeping everyone awake. We're in the evening, I appreciate that. So as sitting, as the governing body of the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, or SWIMAC, this entity provides only surface water services, not sewer services, but it is part of the regulatory overall strategy, what's called its MS4 permit that it shares jurisdictionally with Clackamas County Service District Number One. So it will definitely benefit from the regulatory integration, and given that its annual budget is currently below $300,000 a year, it will definitely benefit from the access to capital markets that is reflected by the consolidated regional approach.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenters? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing that there is no one who wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing and ask for the clerk to read the, excuse me, I will ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only. Skip the line.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please...
I will.
...assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
You bet. This one is going to be 06-2018 of Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the intergovernmental partnership agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County, and Tri-City Service District regarding the Water and Environment Services partnership.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, the second reading will be at the Thursday, May 26, 2018, regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. And before we adjourn, I'm sorry, Mr. Geist left, but I wanted to congratulate him and his staff for the hard work that they have done over a couple of years now to pull this together and actually create some efficiencies that will benefit the ratepayers in the years to come. So I hope you will convey that to him, please.
I'll do that.
And, excuse me, Chair, one item, I will note, I believe it's May 24th, is when our, hopefully looking at the calendar right, but I believe it's two weeks from now, will be May 24th, and at that meeting you will not only see these three ordinances and adoption of the amendment, but several related board orders that will include, for example, specific board orders around how we are ensuring through a transparent process that only the ratepayers of CCSD-1 are paying for that rate, some proposed findings that talks about how the transfer will happen, a board order that will adopt an amendment of the master declaration, which is the actual bond document that governs the issuance of the debt, and an acceptance by West. So you will change hats yet again, and not only be the three service districts, but also West partnership accepting the transfer of that debt. So there'll be a lot of moving parts happening, and it'll all sort of come to a crescendo on May 24th, and we look forward to that.
26th.
That's a typo. It is May 24th, I apologize.
That's when the hearings are as well.
Let's correct that.
Oh, so we've said always through here.
Are these all the 24th?
All of them, we said on the record wrong.
Yes.
I'll make sure the minutes reflect that it's...
So the second reading of all of those will be on the 24th.
May 24th.
Okay. Let the record reflect a correction from the 26th to the 24th.
Yes.
Thank you.
You do that three times.
Three times.
Three hats.
Yes. And we will now adjourn as the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and I hope you coach Chair Bernard for that next meeting. The next item we have is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda by title?
You bet. Today's consent agenda, under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a contract with North Saniam Paving Company for the Friar Park paving package, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake Oswego for traffic signal maintenance and transportation engineering services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for a cooperative signal timing operation on state highways, under the Finance Department, approval of a contract with ABC Roofing for the re-roof multiple building project, approval of a brand specification with APC Schneider Electric for technology services server room upgrade, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, under County Council, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for legal advice on construction-related matters, under technology services, approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sherwood for provision of data, transport, and fiber resources, under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a release and settlement agreement between North Clackamas Park and Recreation District and Brandy Hibbins and Tony Mickle, approval of an easement from North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to Brandy Hibbins of 13730 Southeast Arista Drive, Milwaukee, and approval of amendment number three to the intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Health Housing and Human Services for social service programs, and underwater environment services, approval of a public improvement contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and River City Environmental for the digester cleaning and disposal services, and approval of a public improvement contract between Water and Environment Services and River City Environmental for the digester cleaning and disposal services, and a resolution approving the transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2017-2018 for Clackamas County Service District Number One, and that concludes today's consent agenda.
Do the Commissioners want to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There's only one aye.
Aye. I said aye.
Okay, we didn't hear you.
And I'll say aye, so. Are there any opposed? None and no abstentions. Thank you. The next item we have is in addition to the agenda at the request of Commissioner Savis to have a discussion regarding support for a statement regarding the tolling issue on our highways. So Mr. Savis, would you go ahead and make your presentation?
Yeah, I guess this came up Tuesday, and what's happened since Tuesday, number one, is that I've received an email from Chair Bernard that indeed, this has got a lot of moving pieces to it, but there's an opportunity with a grant, infra grant, that ODOT applied for, for I-205, and our statement of, that we discussed on Tuesday, is important to have consensus, which we've done before, but now we have had several rounds of the value pricing committee meet and iterations of that, and so we want to renew that message and send a strong signal both to the tolling committee on Monday and also to the Federal Highway Administration, I believe, with USDOT, that we are supportive of that particular scenario or motion. So I'd like to make the motion so we can get actually an approval of that. We've done it before, C4 approved it on Thursday, and at least I can go into our meeting on Monday, the tolling committee Monday morning, first thing, and try to leverage that opportunity, and then also get staff to craft a letter that Chair Bernard will be bringing to us on Tuesday to send to the Federal Highway Administration, I believe.
Do you have the specific language of this statement?
I will, I'll just read it aloud. I think it's close enough, and I think the position is that if there, key words, I'll start from the beginning, if there is tolling implemented on I-205, that the revenues derived from the tolling go towards increasing highway capacity.
Okay. Discussion?
So that's my motion.
Sonia?
Yeah, so my only caveat is, studies show that increasing highways, that that does not reduce congestion. I believe that we really need to increase 205 because it goes from three lanes to two lanes, and there's a bottleneck, and there's all this congestion. My only concern about having this be an overall statement is, and I don't have it in front of me, so I can't read it. I tried to write it as you said it, but I couldn't write that fast. So it's just as a general statement from now until far off into the future that we may not, we may want to use tolling in the future for other things to reduce congestion. I mean, there are things happening all over the world to reduce congestion, like tolling entire areas that you go into to value price and to do different things. So I just am concerned about us locking in into the future. But for the purposes of what we need to do for right now in Clackamas County and our community, I think, giving a very strong message that we need to use any tolling funds to increase 205 is important.
So you would support the statement as presented in this particular case?
Well, I don't know, because I don't know the context. I wasn't at C4, so I don't know what that, is it for all times, or is it related to 205?
Well, yes, it's related to 205. Correct. I think I believe how I worded it, that any tolling on 205, any revenues derived from tolling on 205 go towards capacity improvements. So let me elaborate a little bit. Real capacity improvements create, are, in the language in itself, define that you're going to increase the capacity. Now, if you say adding lanes, and let's say you just add more lanes than there, at some point, if you add more lanes, you necessarily add capacity. So as an attorney, you may realize the interpretation of the word sometimes really gets kind of wordy. I have several reports here, actually. I'm happy to leave this with you, Commissioner Fisher. And I will point out that in the tolling scenario number four presented, the technical memorandum number three identified eight different models of adding lanes at particular points in times, and the one that added a lane on Interstate 5 and added a lane on I-205 generated the most amount of congestion relief, also, of course, added capacity. So you can add lanes without adding capacity, that's not what's being proposed here. The traffic engineers have found that that was the highest of all the models presented, that reduced the congestion the most and added the greatest amount of capacity. So what we're saying is on the 205 section, which we have and within our jurisdiction, that that is our recommendation, that they go forward with that. There is, you know, there's a lot of play on words, so you have to read it carefully, but there's also the other example we have right here in Clackamas County is a Sunrise Expressway, which opened about two years ago, and that was a huge congestion relief project. It was designed as such, and it worked. So the mythology that adding lanes does not add capacity is a very broad untrue statement. There are scenarios where that is true.
Right.
But there are quite a few, there are quite a few scenarios where that is not true. So it is, there's a lot of mythology. I don't want to get trapped or sucked into the mythology that if you add a lane, it'll just fill up, you don't improve capacity. And bottlenecks, there's study after study, I got six studies right here that'll demonstrate what I'm saying.
Commissioner?
Yeah, so my only concern is the statement as read out of context is concerning in the light of what they've done in Los Angeles and other parts of the country, that just increasing lanes, I wouldn't want us to be locked into that.
I think we stated clearly it was I-205.
Yeah, so the statement as you read it doesn't say that.
I just read it again, so I'll say it again.
It's hard without actually having it. Paul, and we had a big discussion at policy session, and I know you were busy.
I'm happy to state it one more time. So if there is tolling on Interstate 205, the commission's preference is that the revenues generated go towards increasing the capacity.
If there is tolling on Interstate 205?
If there is tolling on Interstate 205, that the revenues derived go towards increasing capacity on Interstate 205. I'll add 205 twice, just for security.
So I guess my question then is, there's a difference between relieving congestion and increasing capacity.
I didn't say congestion.
No, I know, you said increasing capacity.
That's right.
So...
Further questions?
So, and C4, everybody on C4 agrees with this.
There's only one new person there that didn't have anything about it, she abstained.
Okay, and Mark Gamba weighed in?
He was not...
I thought you said he was not present.
He was not there. He was not there.
Okay. I just don't want us to be locked in to a perspective that, and I just don't know, because I wasn't there. I do not want us to slow down getting a grant at all, and we do need to increase 205.
It would be very powerful if this board...
So I just think this is a broad statement.
It would be, it would be very powerful if this board was unanimous on this.
And let's keep in mind that what we're, we are not making a policy decision that locks us into, to some long-term ordinance or law or rule. We're simply saying at this point in time, if 205 is told, that the people who are paying that toll, that are driving that road, will accrue the benefit of that toll, which is to improve that road.
Right, and then...
And I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Right, and then into the future, so my concern is for now or into the future, I don't know when that stops, but let's say that we improve 205, we use that toll, we improve 205, and the toll keeps coming, and there's diversion to other areas outside of 205, and we want to use funding for, because we don't have enough money to fix our transportation system. So I don't want to give the impression that we are doing this now for, into the future.
Well, we'll have an opportunity in about two weeks, or even sooner, after the meeting on Monday, to clarify our position in writing to the tolling committee in the June meeting. Okay, so, and that's, so I just want to clarify for people that are watching. So Clackamas County is not making a decision to toll. This tolling committee is not making the decision to toll. The decision to toll was made by the legislature in 2017. We don't have control over that. The recommendation out of this 25-member committee that I sit on will be made in June. We're trying to frame up an option that is favorable to the county. We don't know if that will happen. We hope it will, and we believe it will. If not, then we'll have a minority report, and then we'll again send another letter, which we can detail all those different nuances that you might have concerns over, that give you the clarity that you feel comfortable with, and we'll send them a detailed letter of what we think the recommendation ought to be, because I will come back to you Tuesday after following the Monday meeting as to what the outcomes or indications are of that meeting.
What's your timeline again?
Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, so sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Go ahead. I'll wait, I'll wait.
So I'm going into media on Monday morning. I will be reporting to the Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, and staff will have a draft letter for the Federal Highway Administration for us to review on Tuesday. And then we can send a letter back to this tolling committee for their final June meeting. The Oregon Transportation Committee will get that recommendation from June, and then they will make, they'll, they, the Oregon Transportation Commission will make a final decision in December of this year, not us. It's our opportunity to guide this for the benefit of Clackamas County residents. There are currently, so people out there watching, so diversion is a very big issue. As a matter of fact, I was approached this week with an email and a phone call, several emails and a phone call, from a property owner on Stafford Road, and she's had four accidents in front of her property in 40 days. In the last 40 days, she's had four accidents. I think two of them were rollovers, okay? It's made the news, the, it was K2 News, I believe, picked up on this. They were lifelighted out right in front of her home. So we know that right now there's 50,000 trips per day because of congestion that are being diverted right now on the local roads, and Stafford Road, Willamette Road, Borland Road, 65th, Ellison Road, a lot of these roads, Highway 43, they're being called the third lane of I-205. So we're seeing, I left off a lot of other roads as well, Johnson Road, we're seeing a lot of diversion already. If they simply toll without adding capacity, it's 80,000 more trips per day diverted.
Yeah.
That's 130,000 trips if you just toll without adding capacity.
So it's got to be tied to adding capacity.
We have to add capacity on behalf of safety, and Clackamas County is more impacted by this because we do not have a grid, a grid structure, block-to-block grid structure for people to have alternatives. There's no other way to get from point A to point B. So we are actually punishing the citizens of Clackamas County by not advocating for and building more capacity and transportation alternatives between Sunnyside and Wilsonville, 14 miles of I-205 that has no other alternative to get from Wilsonville to Sunnyside without driving a car.
Can I just ask a follow-up real quick, Martha? Do you mind? Because I think we might be concerned about the exact same thing, and I was interpreting what you said as increasing capacity as creating more lanes on the highway, but what you're actually saying is increasing capacity by looking at the whole area.
Increasing capacity in this case is specifically to reduce the bottleneck that's on 205 right now. So where there's two, where there's two lanes, where there's two lanes now, where there goes from three to two...
Well, that could increase capacity, but the tolling could cause diversion.
The congestion's causing diversion right now.
Right. No, I know. I lived there. I mean, we all do. But, so, I'm worth smithing, I'm sorry. It's just wanting to make sure we don't lock ourselves into a policy position with the statement. I don't want to stop an infra grant, but I do, I am concerned about diversion, and we may need to use resources from tolling to deal with all the overall capacity issues. And if that's what you're saying, then I'm in agreement with that.
I think that's why the word that C4 used was capacities.
But you said capacity on 205, or you could say capacity due to?
Well, unless you want to build another highway around I-205, there's no other way of getting around it.
No, but there are creative ways about value pricing and changing people's behavior about when they drive and how they drive and where you invest resources. I don't know why C4 wants to lock us in with this statement.
I don't think they're locking us in. I think that we've studied this for a long time. We specialize in transportation. We read reams of paper. And I think they're well-informed.
Martha?
Yeah, I think, I'm not overly concerned about locking us in. I think, I'm really not, because any, because I think what you're, I think what you're concerned about is that you think that other modalities will be put by the wayside and not have any funding. I don't really think that's going to happen long-term at all. I think it's a combination of adding capacity with lanes and there actually, and Paul can help me out here, you know, there's, there are funding streams specifically set aside for other modalities if you do want to do light rail, if you do want to do other way, not that I'm saying we're going to do light rail on I-205, just saying, hypothetically, okay? You know, if you want to increase transit, I mean, there are revenue streams that are specific to those kinds of modalities that certainly can be used. And so at this point, because it needs to have the lanes widened, I'm fine with the statement. I think, I don't, I think, I understand where your concern, I think, is coming from, but I don't think the statement's going to bring us down the pathway to not having consideration of other modalities with subsequent funding streams.
As a matter of fact, we're kind of fighting for other options. So there are those modalities that are being considered. I will also add that I'm not comfortable being locked down either, but we already are locked down. We're locked down in this study. This study's going down a certain path, and they've narrowed down the options. So we're already locked down. So I can.
And you're talking of the study for 205, what I mean, the 450,000, 500,000?
The tolling study of the five alternatives they're pressing forward on.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you care to put a motion on the floor?
I think I did.
Nope.
You want to read the last motion?
I actually phrased it as a motion.
I think they were writing it down as I was speaking.
Yeah, I don't think I have it for beta.
Okay, but go ahead, and let me see if you got it right.
If there is tolling on Highway I-205, there is funding generated.
I'll start over.
Yeah.
I'll say it really slow.
This is a challenge.
I'll say it really slow. If I-205 is told, the revenues derived are preferred to go towards increasing capacity on Interstate 205.
There you go.
That is my motion.
Can we say?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. Yeah, I'll second.
Question?
Would it be at all balanced to say while also considering possible diversions due to tolling?
We already have done that. So that's part of the whole analysis. This is one, we've read, I've read about at least that much on this. That's exactly what we're trying to prevent, is diversion. If you want to add a second sentence that Clackamas County has a concern about diversion and the traffic and safety impacts of diversion, I'm happy to add that.
Well, and I am concerned about it, because if they decide to do an overall toll without a toll lane, you are going to have some serious diversion. So us, you know, just ignoring that and just increase capacity?
No, we're not ignoring that. We're 100% agreement with that.
Yeah.
100% agreement with that.
So I guess the challenge for me is, is I'm just being asked to approve a sentence out of context without seeing a letter when there's so many other considerations. That's the challenge, and without even.
Yeah. The letter that you'll see on Tuesday and the letter you'll see following that for the final meeting will have the clarity you're looking for. It's the same consistent message that we included in our last letter about diversion. We actually addressed that very thing in the letter that you approved, that you voted to approve. This is particularly focused on one particular option that's being pushed forward.
And we added it to the agenda because time is essential at this point in time. He has to have something in his hands on Monday for that meeting, and subsequently, that information needs to be expanded upon for the letter that we'll be looking at on Tuesday. So that's why we had to add it to the agenda and get this done. So unless we're hopefully not reiterating the same points over and over again, if we're done with our discussion, we need to call the question. So are we done with the discussion? Can we move on? Are we good to go? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And.
That was an aye?
Yeah. Yes, she said aye. And you will make sure that she gets these materials, so.
Yeah. Great. I'll make sure that.
Yeah, why don't you send it toll? It'd be nice.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, and Paul, I'd just like to see it in context. That's all.
Sure.
The sentence out of context is challenging.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the county administrator update. Ms. Butman?
Thank you, Chair. I have two great stories to share with you today and with the public. So there was a very nice compliment paid to Clackamas County and a story via a story in New School Beer, that's a publication, an online publication, that focuses on national and Oregon beer industry news. The story relayed how Little Beast Brewing is moving its production facilities from Beaverton to the Clackamas area. When asked why Clackamas County was chosen, the brewery's co-owner stated, Portland is getting extremely expensive, and when you're talking about a 6,000 to 10,000-foot production space, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense financially to drop it in the middle of Portland and pay retail prices. Clackamas County is just easier to work with in terms of business development and getting things moving faster. So thanks, Little Beast, and we're happy to have you. It's my understanding that the compliment was directed toward our Building Codes Division, so great job to that team. And of course, our Business and Economic Development Team also is committed to attracting businesses to the area. Yes, very nice. And secondly, in case you missed it, NBC Nightly News with Lester Holt was in Portland to highlight some of the work being done in Clackamas County to address opioid abuse. This past Monday, the national news program showcased some of the innovative ways the county and our partners are working to curb the opioid epidemic. We hope that a shining, a national light on our partnerships and creative work will inspire other agencies around the country to follow us. So, great job to the folks from Health Housing and Human Services, the Sheriff's Office, and everyone else involved that made this happen. And if you missed the story, you can find it at NBCNightlyNews.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Commissioner Communications, Commissioner Savis.
I just wanted to add on that, I think the emergency responders are the ones that were primarily filmed on that Monday night thing with the Lester Holt.
That was my understanding as well.
So I can't recall if it was CCFD-1, or TVFNR, or if it was AMR, but it was definitely emergency responders that I saw on the article, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of them. So, yeah, so my, what I wanted to just talk about briefly was actually somewhat of what we talked about, and that really is a diversion. I was, again, I got a call about these accidents on Stafford Road, and we have had a number of roads where you had a lot of safety issues. Unger Road, Redlin Road, Maple Lane, Highway 26, we have a lot of dangerous things out over there. This property owner that's been contacting me, she lost her daughter on Stafford Road, and I share with her how I lost, you know, my mom, my brother, and my dad through different car accidents. So I can definitely have a concern and a focus about safety on our roads. And we'll be looking into this particular one to see why suddenly the frequency of the accidents on Stafford Road is on the uptick. But if some of you recall, I wasn't here too long ago when we had the mayor of Wilsonville here, and my issue and concern was, if you might recall, is that the added diversion and traffic that'll go down Stafford Road if they build 1,750 more homes. And I really cited really this very same issue. I didn't really know about this particular property and this particular property owner at the time, but I have heard from other property owners before and after that meeting, specifically about how bad Stafford Road is getting. So I think we really need to be very cognizant of how we work and address growth in areas where we're on the edge of a city that's growing on their edges and encroaching in the, in the Clackamas County where it's rural or it's unincorporated, either or, and how we deal with the attaching roads, because they become our responsibility, and we don't have the resources to immediately address that. So we need to be a little more thoughtful about how we grow and not destroying our quality of life as relates to traffic congestion, safety, diversion, and all these other things we talked about. So I think we're really saying all the same thing. We have the same concern. So I do want to say that. That's what I have for today. I will close with the dog. So, Mary's going to put Akira on the screen here. She is a gorgeous husky gal who is in the need of a new and breed savvy home. If you know anything about her breed.
Got her tongue stuck out.
Yeah. You know that they are often loud and proud, and she is no exception. Huskies are an energetic lot, and she is going to need a lot of physical exercise and even more mental stimulation to keep her happy. Because of her energetic husky nature, she is not a good candidate for the apartment life. She is also a shining example of another characteristic of this breed. She is an escape artist. It's important that her future family have a plan to keep her contained. She would really appreciate a training class with you to firm up some of her good behaviors, learn new skills, and bond with you as her new friend. She would love to go for leased hikes and runs, any sort of adventure you'd like to take her on. Come visit her today. For more information about Akira and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, (503) 655-8628. And our website's on the screen at www.clackamas.us/dogs. That's what I have for today, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Humberston. I've had a couple days of focusing on education for our kids in our community. I went out and visited with staff for Todos Juntos, which provides a lot of services for families in need, and it was just wonderful, sitting around a roundtable and hearing what the needs are in our rural communities. They are pretty significant, and it's nice to know that we provide some of the funding along with other private donations and other funders to provide the safety net. And that's for services for moms with babies, for kids that are between birth and eight years old, and also in our middle schools and beginning in our high schools. So that was very rewarding and wonderful. Went from that to, our legislators had a public hearing at Clackamas High School. There were a lot of people there, a lot of stories, a lot of parents talking about how their kids are not having their needs met from our school system, class sizes of over 30 kids for kids in elementary school, how teachers struggle to answer a million questions for all these kids and all the needs that are beyond educating their kids. Very compelling testimony that was heard, and it just brings to mind how important it is, what we do in Clackamas County, providing the safety net. Because so many of the stories were, how can our kids learn when they come to school hungry, when they are switching schools because they're homeless and they don't have a place to live, when the mental health needs, when the drug addiction in our community, all those things that we, that where we are the safety net that touch the lives of our kids with families. So it was an honor to be there and to listen and to learn, and we have a lot of work to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, been another busy week here. We had the Administrator's Housing Strategy Meeting. I know Commissioner Savis was there as well, where we actually talked about the progress we've been making with the veterans' housing. It turns out, the nonprofit has moved in right next door to the site that actually specializes in providing food to veterans. So that was not done within 10. It was serendipity, but a happy occasion because they're very excited about having close access to those group of folks there. Talking with our deputy administrator, Dan Chandler, the task force is ready to go, and I believe the first meeting is going to be on April 23rd. And this is, is that right? Is it May 20? Oops, sorry. Okay, I'm a month behind myself.
You're away.
Yeah, you're right. Hmm, okay. So May 23rd, and it's going to be a group of folks that represent the business community, advocacy, industry folks, home builders, realtors. We, you know, we're not actively as a commission, there aren't really elected officials there. Wilder Parks will be there, but she is there in her capacity, not as an elected official, but as a person who is also serving on our Economic Development Commission. But what we're trying to do is to be quiet, to allow that group of folks to help us frame some of these issues and be a voice that may perhaps that we haven't heard from before about what some of the solutions could be for the housing crisis we've had, we're actually facing here, not only in Clackamas County, but throughout the county. And I had a wonderful conversation with Betty Dominguez about this the other night, and I said, no, she and I will be sitting in the audience listening intently. But this is going to be facilitated by an external facilitator, and they are going to be actually, you know, running their own discussion, obviously with some suggestions, but it's our job to listen to, we hope, some new ideas. Also had an opportunity to meet with Dwight Holton, who is the Executive Director of Lines for Life. And to what Commissioner Fisher said, one of the things that they've been doing is expanding their lines for young people who are suicidal, and they are looking to possibly have a portion of that activity, of that piece of what they do, their portfolio located in Clackamas County. So he has asked me to explore that idea with him, and so, folks, you'll be hearing more about this under Issues. Thanks to Commissioner Fisher. We have met with the superintendents, and it seems to me that the time may be ripe to work with them to expand that function. They also are the VA's choice for veterans who are suicidal and actually contract with the entire state of Oregon in general for those kinds of calls. But they are really trying to move forward with a youth focus, so that was a really good thing to find out. And then I had a meeting with the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County, the Steering Committee, and that is the grassroots group that has basically built itself from the ground up in Oregon City that now is expanding its activities throughout the county. And they're going great guns and working hard to expand their model, so that's great. Just want to remind folks that Clackamas Community College President Joanne Truesdale is going to be retiring, but she will still be available to talk to, and I'm sure will still be active with our community college. And they are having an event for her tomorrow, Friday, the 11th, at the Clackamas Community College Randall Hall Gym on Malala Avenue in Oregon City, Oregon. And if folks want to say goodbye to her and/or honor her for her years of service with our community college, now's the time to do it. Okay, let's move to the Word of the Week. It'll pop up here. Okay. And once again, thanks to Kevin for this. Elusive adjective, difficult to perceive, comprehend, or describe. Did you know? An elusive issue or point is one that would require real work to grasp completely. It was first used in the early 1700s. Teaching students to read is a goal that is easily understood. However, the obstacles in how children learn to read can be a bit more elusive. Thank you, Kevin, again, for doing our Word of the Week for the commissioners. Okay, finally, arts and culture activities in the county. Clackamas High School presents The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. Award-winning playwright Joseph Robinett faithfully recreates the wonderful world of C.S. Lewis's Narnia, Friday and Saturday, May 11th and 12th, 7:00 p.m. at Clackamas High School. Sandy High School presents All in the Timing, a collection of one-act plays by Davis Ives, Friday and Saturday, May 11th and 12th, 7:30 p.m. at Sandy High School. And Harmony Road Music presents their Mother's Day weekend concert. This annual concert features the talents of Harmony Road students, parents, teachers, and alumni. Featured performers this year will be their graduating seniors, May 12th, 2:30 to 4:00 at the Neumeyer Center at the Clackamas Community College campus. And once again, remember, Lakewood Sister Act is running through June 10th, and Clackamas Repertory Theater will be starting Sense and Sensibility running from June 28th through July 22nd. July 22nd. So, if you want any more information, uh, look at the website, clackamasartsalliance.org. So, there's the news, folks. Okay?
Mr. Savis, you had something else?
I just wanted to just, uh, ask Commissioner Schrader if she felt that transportation and land use policy is elusive.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, actually, I was at the Metrop, I was at IMPAC the other night, the land use piece, and it was one of the more elusive meetings I've ever had the opportunity to. Once again, a lot of information, but no decision-making point. It eluded us. Elusive, eluded us one more time. There you go.
Well, on that topic, now that it's my turn, it took an hour and 30 minutes to go 20 miles today. So, I do think we have a congestion problem that needs to be relieved. And I did drive the, the 205 section again the other day and made a point of accurately counting the number of bridges that have to be dealt with, and it is 12 bridges plus the Abernathy Bridge. So, that is an expensive project to get this done. I thought it was six to nine bridges. It's 12. Wow. So, and that's 'cause the lanes are separated and the bridges are separated. So, there's six locations, 12 bridges. Yeah. Um, I'd like to point out something that has, has been occurring over the last few months, um, some of which started a long time ago, but we're seeing a number of different agreements that have been put together between Clackamas County and other agencies and cities and other counties, which are resulting in significant savings to taxpayers. We had several of them on our agenda, on the consent agenda today. Uh, the WES, um, uh, formation is, is another major one. We've even had, uh, 200 pages of, of, um, of planning and land use, um, rules and regulations reduced. So, for people who are concerned about government efficiency, I wanna make the point that our staff are working very hard to find places where we can be more efficient and more effective and get, um, the benefit of partnering up with other agencies, um, to, to make the use of the taxpayers' money as efficient as possible. Most taxpayers don't pay a lot of attention as to which government agency it is. It's just my taxes, and is the government spending them wisely or not? And where we can work with other agencies and do this, I think, um, it, it bodes well for Clackamas County going forward. Um, was, a question was asked of me about why we have lobbyists in Washington DC, and what good does that do us, and why do we go back to Washington DC as Commissioner Bernard has done today? Over the course of the last 20 years, we have spent $4.2 million on lobbyists. That is a true number. That has brought back to us, in partnership with us going there as electeds and meeting with other electeds, $172 million. That's a pretty good return on investment, and that's why we do it, 'cause those federal funds are useful in our roads and many of the other, uh, projects, including Health, Housing and Human Services and other programs that are beneficial to our community. So, um, yes, we do pay lobbyists, but we are definitely getting our money's worth. Um, I had the benefit this week of attending, uh, a tour of the first, uh, they say tech, yeah, First Tech Credit Union in Hillsborough, being made out of cross-laminated timber. Beautiful project. They won't let us take pictures and post them on Facebook, unfortunately, so we can't do that. But, um, the company was very interested in some of the things that we're considering going forward here in Clackamas County, and is interested in talking to us about that. And they have, um, also developed good connections into the governor's office, uh, so there may be some synergy for our project as we go forward. Met with the Broadband Services Committee, uh, as a representative of Clackamas County and the AOC, uh, to develop the rules and regulations on state providing broadband services in underserved and unserved areas for public agencies. Sort of laid our marker down on the table that we wanna make sure that whatever the rules are, that the, the ability that, and the flexibility that Clackamas County currently enjoys is not hindered. So, I will be defending our abilities to go forward with our ideas and not have them hindered by any other rules. Uh, we were very well represented today at the Metro Housing Summit. Commissioner, myself, Commissioner Fisher, and Commissioner Savis all attended, and at least five of our Health, Housing and Human Services staff were there. So, Clackamas County was exceptionally well-represented, and, uh, quite frankly, it was noticed that we were there and, and that electeds were there paying attention. So, we are doing the job we are supposed to do. The last item I have, it has been a year and a half, but I am happy to announce today, after a year and a half of patience and persistence, the, the Fair Board has unanimously approved our memorandum of agreement.
It's a miracle.
Thank you, it's a miracle.
We got it done.
Good work.
So...
Good work.
Uh, they will be signing it tonight. Our staff will be bringing it back from the meeting. Uh, we will have it on our discussion agenda on Tuesday, formally on Thursday, and I would like to ask, um, Ms. Butman to, uh, talk to PGA about a ceremonial signing opportunity.
Absolutely. Ooh, great job.
They, they were patient and persistent, as were we, and, uh, it took a little time, but we got, I think, everybody where they needed to be.
How are they getting along with the rodeo board?
That's approved, interestingly enough.
That's approved, too? Okay, good.
Clay has been coming to their meetings. Uh, they are going to do what we did with the Fair Board and have a mediation meeting. Um, but they, they are reaching out to each other and starting to work together more.
Okay, good.
So...
Good.
And I, I have suggested to them repeatedly that that is the best thing they could do, 'cause the last thing they want is us interfering with their relationship. So, so, they are working on that. On that note, if there is no other comment, we stand adjourned. Thank you.